Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the January 6th meeting of the Ipswich School Committee to order. It's 7:02. Thank you all for coming and this meeting is also on YouTube. I would like Caroline Jepson to read the district mission statement, please.
Yeah.
Our student representative, thank you.
Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be global citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice, and demonstrating competency.
Thank you, Caroline. Announcements. The next school committee meeting will be held on Thursday, January 20th at 7:00 p.m. The communications subcommittee will meet Tuesday, January 11th at 5:00 p.m. School and district offices will be closed on Monday, January 17th. Kindergarten roundup has started. If you have a child who will be entering kindergarten in September, please complete the kindergarten roundup form. A link to the form can be found on the homepage of the district website, www.ipsk12.net. Also, due to the snow emergency, there's no school tomorrow. Are there any other announcements?
Yeah, a bunch of subcommittee will meet on the 20th. We have our budget presentation.
What time?
Hopefully six. We'll just have to coordinate with the administrators to make sure that works.
Okay, great. Thank you, Greg. Dr. Blake, anything else?
There are announcements?
No. Special acknowledgements?
Yep, I just want to give two shout-outs. The principals were in early on Monday morning to help unpack and then repack all the COVID tests for the staff so that staff could come by Monday morning and pick those kids up and take them for testing. And then a major shout-out to Jen Reed. I can't sing her praises enough during the holiday break. Jen also works for the town, so she was aware of all of what was going on here and some tabs on our students and staff throughout the holiday break along with me. Tried to give the, I tried to give the nurses a break, but I just have a whole respect for them and felt that later. But just a big shout-out to Jen Reed and all she's done throughout this and in particular over the last couple of weeks.
So I know she took her, she was planning on taking some time and she really wasn't able to because it was a full-time job. It was incredible what she did. I reached out to her and said, hey, thanks, I know it's been a crazy week, and then parentheses, okay, year. She's been great, so thank you, Jen. All right, citizens' comments. Does anyone have any citizens' comments, sir?
I do. My name's Jason.
Come step to the microphone, please. State your name and your address and then your comment.
Jason Keough, and 16 North Main Street, Ipswich, Massachusetts. And my comment, I'm going to actually, I desire to be concise, I will be reading my statement from this computer.
Okay.
If at any point you wish to seek clarification, please stop me. This is my daughter, Aska. She is a seventh-grade student athlete at Ipswich Middle School. I'm speaking on her behalf today regarding the usage of something called a middle waiver. It is an allowance made by the MIAA for high schools to use middle school athletes in order to field a team that does not have an established threshold number of high school players on a roster. It is a need-based request. Currently, Aska plays ice hockey in the Marblehead youth hockey system on both a U-12 Pee-wee roster and a U-14 girls roster. The experience in Marblehead has been awesome. The hockey season ends in March, and then it's tryouts, first for club hockey and then for towns, all to establish things for next fall. Aska has some decisions to make. Some of her female teammates are already playing at Marblehead High School. Marblehead has a seventh and eighth grade waiver, but Ipswich students play within a different consortium that includes Danvers and Beverly, with Beverly acting as host. Beverly has requested and received an eighth grade waiver. Danvers has done the same. Ipswich has not requested a waiver, so why am I here? When I inquired to the athletic director in October regarding middle waivers, he wrote that waivers are need-based and that he was unaware of a need at the host school. Last night, we watched Beverly play Masco. Beverly has three eighth graders rostered. Two are from Danvers, one got regular time playing defense. Masco had a bunch of seventh and eighth graders out there. Beverly won 6-0. I have been in correspondence with the athletic director about waivers in girls hockey for over a year. In our correspondence earlier this week, he wrote, "Eighth grade waivers have become a larger discussion item for us, one that is currently ongoing. To date, we do not have any eighth grade waivers in place for any of our sports teams. This discussion will continue to take place over the next few months, so at this point, there isn't much to discuss. I'd be happy to update you later this year if you'd like to check back in." The waiver process is time-sensitive. Certain filing deadlines with the MIAA must be met either six or three months ahead of the start of the season. So for fall sports, a six-month lead time means March. I can already see where this is potentially going, or more accurately, is not going. So I have some questions. One, why has an Ipswich ever used a waiver? The MIA has made a waiver system to help schools fill out and stabilize rosters. Here on the North Shore, for girls hockey alone, there are waivers in place for Newbury Court, Masco, Gloucester, Hamilton-Wentham, Marblehead, Swambska, Winthrop, and the above-mentioned Beverly and Danvers, our partners in girls hockey. On the MIA website, there are nine pages of waivers in tiny font. It's not an obscure rule. Two, is there a written policy in Ipswich against the use of a waiver? I haven't been able to find one, so frankly, I don't understand what there is to discuss, but if there is discussion, I'm interested. Three, who's taking part in the discussion about waiver usage? I hope it is a signal that the administration will get together soon and take action, but I don't know. I do know that over the past few years, many people have approached the waiver issue only to be worn down by institutional inertia, and I'm not asking that we form a committee to explore the idea of a commission to create a cert. We are losing high-caliber student athletes to private schools and school choice. I know because I have talked to some of them, and with a bit of sadness, we too are weighing our options. Aska loves Ipswich, her teachers, her classmates, she likes soccer, but she really loves hockey. She wants a fair shake, the same consideration that her future teammates in Beverly and Danvers are offered. And if this topic gets too discussed on on and on and on, she could be on the outside looking in or somewhere else entirely. For our purposes, if we don't know anything by March 1st, we'll check this box as same as it ever was and go from there, and that's the way it is. A girls hockey middle waiver may only affect one student, that one right there. It's important to her, so it's important to me. The other thing that's important to me is how the administration handles this request. Unless advised otherwise, tomorrow I plan to provide a copy of my request to the superintendent, principal, the vice principal, and the athletic director. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Dr. L. Flynn.
So I've been on the committee for about eight, 19 years, and we've had waivers many times for eighth graders playing at the high school level exclusively pretty much if those teams were threatened with not existing or if they're JV teams.
It is a need-based program.
And so for girls basketball, a number of times for other sports, we've done it. So it's difficult with sports that aren't based in our school system. So I think one of the challenges for Tom is if Beverly didn't notify him that they don't have enough people to play on their team, then it's hard for him to file for a waiver for a sport that he does not control.
Totally understand.
And we've had issues with some of the other collaborative sports that we've had where they've had low numbers, and in fact, right now, our collaborative, the experience with Georgetown is that they used to send a whole lot of kids to our winter track team, and now they send very few. And so, you know, it's hard to know what other schools are going to give you, let alone your own school. So that's why it's hard to plan in advance. We also haven't planned for people who go to private school or not because that's not been discussed with us in any, in any way, as far as I can tell. So it's need-based because, you know, again, you have to know the need. So is there a need? Do they have too few kids? Are they lacking? No. Does Beverly High School lack enough players?
Yeah, so they have waivers now. They have eighth grade waivers. So last night we saw they have three eighth grade players on the roster.
So I understand they have kids, but do they have not enough kids to field the team?
Yeah, so it's a consortium. It's Beverly, Danvers, and Ipswich. We're all one team. We all play for Beverly High School as the hosts. And so this year, Beverly and Danvers were both in the loop, and then they requested waivers, and they both have eighth graders on the team, which is not, does not.
Doesn't that make an equity issue, too?
Sorry?
Well, if, shouldn't Tom be checking with Danvers? Is it based out of Beverly?
Yeah, so the host is the one who's supposed to ask. So if Beverly needs kids, they should tell us, you should file a waiver because we need kids. But apparently they didn't, and we don't know what it stretches to next year or the other year. I think that's the biggest challenge. I mean, for Tom, and this is true of other sports, we've been asked many times for very talented athletes at the younger level who want to play up if they can play up, and even if they play up, they're only allowed to play up the lowest-level team that exists at the school. So for example, a lot of very talented eighth grade basketball girls wanted to play varsity but weren't allowed to because there was a JV program in place and they could play JV. And I know, you know, other instances where track athletes could have moved up because we have a track program and they wanted to support that, they didn't move those kids up because there are plenty of them. So yeah, I think this has to be, you know, administrative outreach for players, communicate it to the athletic directors, and then they bring it.
To us to file for the waiver thing pretty much every time.
It's always been sport by sport, and it's hard to do in advance because you just don't know the numbers. In certain sports, like we know football, we show the kids next year. So that's a sport where maybe that's something we look for in advance.
Well, please know that we're very, very interested, you know? And that's an equity issue as well, because she has, this is my friend, we staffed with her in the features yesterday, she's a seventh grader in Danvers, and she has the waiver for next year in all probability. You know, it depends on how many graduate, how many are on the roster. We're talking about it. Dem is in, and right now, Aska is out.
So, and is that for, as Hugh was saying, the lowest?
It's one team. It's a varsity team only.
Oh, it is? It is? Okay, okay. Interesting.
Rod Donahue, High Street. So Mr. Keough referenced folks that have lost their basketball down by inertia, by edging the charter, and processes being worn down. My frustration that I have with this is the definition that Ipswich uses for need for players. So what I've heard from the athletic director and just now from Dr. Flynn is we look at it as if we are in danger of not being able to field a team. What we see throughout the Cape Town, Manchester Essex, Swambska, Georgetown, et cetera, is they are using the exception to build an athletic program, which is very different than the approach that we have here in Ipswich. Manchester Essex had a varsity girls soccer team. They had a JV1 girls soccer team. They had a JV2 girls soccer team. They implemented their waiver and brought eighth grade players up to play on those teams. Now, is that needs-based? I don't know. In Ipswich standards, it would be said as no, because we have enough to field a varsity team and a single JV team. If we had sought out input from eighth graders, perhaps we would have had enough players to have a JV1 and a JV2, which allows you to develop a program. Almost think of it as a freshman team, lower level, a little higher level is prepping them for varsity, and then we have varsity. Right now, I coach the travel basketball team for eighth grade girls. There are seven eighth grade girls in the town of Ipswich that play basketball. How do you run an effective practice with seven players in the game of basketball versus 5-1-5? I reached out to the athletic director, told him the situation, and I was told, no, we have enough players. This is a perfect example where right now, there are 24 girls playing basketball between the junior varsity and the varsity team. If we had brought those seven eighth graders up, we could have a JV1, a JV2, and a varsity. We could be building a program. Manchester Essex has a waiver in place. They have a JV1, a JV2, a varsity program. Our definition, I feel, is faltered. There's fault, there's fault to it. And through Mr. Keough's point, supposedly there's a discussion going on. You have a willing volunteer, and we have a second willing volunteer to be involved in that, and his story of there have been many that have gone before and have been worn down by inertia, I am here as living proof that that is exactly what's at the base of this, and I do feel that this is an important policy-type of discussion that needs to be had.
So as an example, girls basketball's been one of the most common places we've brought kids up, like at least two, three times in the last 10 years we've brought kids up.
We currently have zero seventh grade girls in the town.
Right. So, but the reason we brought them up was because we were understaffed at the JV level, right? So what you're saying is you'd create another team. What we know is schools like Georgetown and Manchester Essex, where they have a common middle high school and a common principal for both schools, are allowed to bring any JVs up anywhere they want. The whole school counts for their school team. So they're allowed, like Georgetown historically has played seventh and eighth graders all the way, always, on varsity. It's a pool of athletes that they're allowed to draw from in a middle high school with a single principal, but we're not allowed to do that because we have two principals in two separate schools within one building.
So we wouldn't be able to bring up eighth grade students to create a JV1?
Unless we filed a waiver for lack of ability to field the team without it.
So it simply comes down to us not filing waivers because?
We don't have two, we don't run two teams. We've never run two teams.
But I don't understand, we have two boys JV now. Why do we not have two?
Do we have two boys at JV now?
We have a JV, why do we have two varsity?
Rob, I agree with your point 100%, and I think the perfect example of your example is the team that our field hockey team played in the state championship this year. They had, I think, 17, 18 girls on the roster with three eighth graders that started. So to your point, they're building a solid program by bringing these kids up.
And I'm not asking for eighth graders to play varsity, and I'm talking about?
Get them in the mix.
There is a lot of volunteer force power and parents that are working to create an athletic program within this town, and I'm speaking just for myself, but I would say that there's a level of frustration that gets stopped by the individual who's getting paid to build the athletic program in this town. And I'm not trying to make a personal attack, I'm just saying that I feel like this needs to be built out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this issue up. Aska, thank you very much for coming. Aska is a teammate of my daughter Stella's, and she's a phenomenal soccer player. I really look forward to seeing you on Ipswich High School's soccer team as a varsity player. I think this issue needs to go to the athletic subcommittee. I hear the time-sensitive, I hear one thing, two things. I heard the word months and the word, we're going to be talking about choice shortly, so other parents are going to be talking, are going to be considering choice slots as well. So I'd love to see it go to the athletic subcommittee.
I can tell you, like, when we've done, brought kids up, it's been last minute, it's after, only after registrations for the high school quotes for that sport, will they say, okay, we need three eighth graders to come up. That's when you get them.
I understand.
Otherwise, you don't. Like, that's it. It would be displacing, it would be, if you had a JV team and you had 19 kids, that means you'd be basically cutting nine high school students in favor of eighth graders or not. And certainly, there'd be eighth graders who could be swinging those.
So we've gone way over our three minutes of citizens' comments for this. So it should go to an athletic subcommittee. I'd love to see you guys put it shortly on your, on an agenda for the athletic subcommittee. But, you know, it's also about retaining good students that live in this town, too. I mean, that's an issue I heard tonight, and I know we had an incredible athlete, a couple athletes on that field hockey team Greg just mentioned, from the educations program. I don't think we should encourage our kids to stay. So if we can do things like give them waivers, that would be great. But I'd like you to look at it in the athletic subcommittee and hopefully make some timely decisions. Is that the way to proceed? You guys go with that? Okay, thank you for coming.
Would you like me to email you a copy of what I?
Sure, I'll send it around. Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Aska. Okay, any other citizens' comments?
Is it okay if I turn that down one notch?
Sure.
Just hard to hear.
Sure. I'm trying to yell behind this mask, too, Lori.
Thank you.
All right. So, high school representative report. Caroline?
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Hello, Ipswich School community. Well, here are some of the happenings at the Ipswich High School. Over the course of the past two weeks and before vacation, the Ipswich girls and boys indoor track teams won their first meet a couple weeks ago against Essex Tech, and then they won another meet against Manchester Essex as well. In terms of clubs and fundraisers, unfortunately, the newly revived ski and snowboard club had their first ski trip that had been set for this Sunday, but was canceled due to COVID. The environmental and sustainability class is also doing a coat drive for newly arriving refugees to Ipswich. The Ipswich High School is starting an esports team also that is supposed to be play, that is supposed to play against other teams around Massachusetts. Also, many art students participated in the Art All Over event, and the students who won the event include Jaclyn Jardis, Maeve Carlton, Cooper Stewart, and Sophie DeGrapo. Also, there is a donation program happening at the high school. Students are donating fidget spinners, fidget toys, stuffed animals, et cetera, which will be donated to Salem Hospital and given to children struggling with depression, anxiety, and autism. Also, there are some increasing concerns about COVID in the school system in terms of kids that I've talked to, and also about what is going to happen with midterms is unsure, but I think that's unsure for everybody. But, thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Any questions for Caroline? I might have a question about your last subject, but I want to hear from Dr. Blake first.
Okay. Sounds good.
Dr. Blake? You ready to go?
Yeah, yeah. So we had, Monday, as I mentioned earlier, schools closed, and we took the morning to provide all staff with COVID tests, that they picked up along with 10 KN95 masks. They took them home, took their tests, and then let us know if anybody was positive. We just needed to know the positives. So I think we had a handful of teachers that tested positive. We have, so that was Monday, and then yesterday, Tuesday, we opened up, and it's been an extremely busy week, and I can see and I share the concerns expressed by Caroline. We had, for the two-week period, so from December 23rd, when we get out of school, up until yesterday morning, which is a two-week period that I have to report to the state, the official numbers, I reported 129 COVID cases. Prior to that, just to give you a frame of reference, prior to that, we were averaging between five and eight cases a week, so it like took an astronomical jump during that period. As I mentioned earlier, over the Christmas holiday, I tried to give the nurses a break, so to speak, and tried logging all of those and doing some of the tracking for them, and it was a monumental task. So we currently have 16 staff members that are out due to COVID district-wide. They're on different timeframe for coming back. Some are able to come back tomorrow if we had school, others are out till different stages of next week. Since I reported to the state, which was yesterday morning, actually about 1:00, I hit the send button, we've had another 20 cases entered into the system. So we're still seeing a significant number of cases come in. When I talked to the nurses this afternoon, they said that today was a little bit quieter, so I'm hoping that in the next couple of days, with school being closed and the weekend, and we'll be able to sanitize the buildings again, that come Monday, we'll be in better shape. That's about it on that.
Does that mean there's, if you have 16 staff out, do they come out with 129 COVID cases, or is that in addition to?
Nope, nope, that comes out of.
Okay, so you have 113 students?
Right.
And 16 staff.
Brian, what are the, does this seem comparable to other towns, if you've talked to other superintendents?
Yeah, other superintendents are sharing the same kind of numbers, despite over the last couple of days.
What have our attendance rates been?
I haven't looked, I mean, I don't get the attendance, like the percentage. The only one that lists them out for me, I get a copy, I get a screenshot of the attendance from the middle school, and it hasn't been bad, and I don't think it was too bad today at the high school. Tuesday was, the elementary's, I don't know.
So just to Caroline's point about, you know, having some, some anxiety or uncertainty, certainly, I'm hearing that parents are feeling that also. And I, I don't think that there's been a good district-wide communication about what precautions are being taken within the school. I felt like on Tuesday morning, some individual teachers were reluctant to send something. Eventually, the principal in our school did send out a really great recap. But, you know, I felt like going into the reopening, parents didn't know what to expect. And then they were hearing, windows are going to be open, dress your kids warm, you know, we're going to be doing these. But until that communication went out, there was a lot of unease felt among people who I was speaking with.
Yeah, on Tuesday, I made sure that all the principals communicated that.
Caroline?
Is it known whether or not a lot of the cases are passed within the school, or are these, like, out-of-school cases?
So at this point in time, most of them are out of school. We hear that there were a couple of raging parties over New Year's that were in town. Maybe rumor, who knows? But most of the recent cases this week would have been from over vacation. But there were, there was a cluster at the Doian School right after school got out that we believe was an in-school classroom transmission. So I think there was one, there was also some in-school transmission here at the high school.
So we have 113 kids out. These kids are out for an average of, I know that doesn't count against their attendance, but they're out for about five, I would call it a school week, at least.
So we don't have 129 kids out?
113.
No, because a lot of those were, those were cases that were recorded.
Okay.
During, from, from Christmas, from the 23rd.
Correct. Okay. How many do you think you have out now? Do you know?
Not even half of that.
Okay.
Not even half of that.
Okay. So I, she made the point about midterms. So.
Yep. I know this afternoon during the earlier lease time, that was, that was on the high school's agenda. I don't know what the outcome was.
Yeah.
And then that John Mitchell was meeting with department heads and other teachers to sort out what, what midterm is going to look like.
Because, you know, if you break the numbers down even farther, there's 20 to 30 kids. And if they don't, they don't get, get instructional periods before midterms, are we going to delay them?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Laurie LaFrance is raising her hand. Does she have some knowledge to that subject?
So John did send out an email this, John sent out an email this afternoon to say that after our staff discussion that he turns on the teachers to realize that these are running times and that we will do our best to support you in preparation and making the tests as fair as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lori. There you go.
Awesome.
Yeah, and I think the other side to that, one piece is, are there going to be midterms? The other piece is, how do you keep kids who are out of the classroom for prolonged periods of time?
Thank you.
Educated. And part of that is, is remote available? Are we going to be flipping classrooms a little bit more so we can have kids doing some of the lecture stuff at home? And doing more class, working classes? Is there some way to manage this, you know, lack of ability for kids to gain material in that timeframe? Because, you know, some of my daughter's classes had half the number of kids that usually have.
Half of the students, yeah. 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 That's something that teachers are aware of, and they've been working on it. I know that, I posed that question to Laura, emailed me to talk about that, working on, on solutions. Right now, there is not a remote option available to students?
But teachers are smart about that. They can flip classrooms, they can do all sorts of ways to kind of make the material more manageable outside of the classroom.
Yep. I hope there's some empathy and some compassion for those kids who can't come, who can't be there based on the circumstances.
I'm sure there is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hugh, what are your numbers like at Beverly? We're up to 70 COVID inpatient with 10 in the ICU.
We had 61 this morning, which is lower than the first two peaks. We were maxed out in the ICU for a while, but we're a little lower in the ICU. We've had some tragedies, though. We had a 15-year-old die two days ago in the roster, which is really, really terrible. So, you know, young people can still get life-threatening COVID. And unless it, you know, something that people don't suspect or aren't aware of because they just think it's a cold and they're not really concerned. But it is, it's a, it's a dangerous thing, especially without vaccination.
Anything more to add, Tom, to that?
No, just, we, our numbers haven't been this high since spring of 2020.
Yeah, both peaks were a little higher than this at Beverly. So we were over 100, I think, the first time in '73, I think, the last time. But we're running numbers that are, for the month anyway, for the month of December, we were a little below the month of February last year. And we suspect this month will be as high or higher. But we've got projections from our, you know, whoever the gurus in epidemiology are, and they projected the peak to be between the 8th and the 13th. That means we're almost at peak.
Yep.
And what's historically happened after peak is a fairly rapid drop in cases, but a long trail of hospitalizations that tend to lag the peak by two weeks or three weeks because all those people get sick, then they stay in the hospital for two weeks after they're sick.
Yeah.
So we're going to have the hospital full probably till mid-February, but you may well see those numbers start to decline in a week or two.
That's encouraging.
So hopefully, by the end of the month, you'll see this really lighten up here. But it's, it's as bad as it's going to get right about now.
Okay.
In terms of number of people in the community that are COVID.
So there's the silver lining. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? That's it? Cool. All right. Tonight, we have Laurie LaFrance and her environmental students here to talk about electric vehicle charging stations. So I'd love it if you got, you guys are going to introduce yourselves as well, correct? Okay.
The microphone's there, so that's.
Go right ahead. So you have someone manning the computer. That's fine.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you guys? You just say next slide every time you want to.
Thank you.
So, hi, we're the Ipswich.
Oh, you have to, you guys all come over here. Thanks.
It's for the people at home.
And for the microphones. You got to talk to that, because that's you at home.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having us. So we're the Ipswich High School Sustainability Class, and I'm Riley.
I'm Audrey.
I'm Parker.
And I'm Maggie.
And this year, we would like to add an electric vehicle charging station into the school parking lot. We want to encourage students, faculty, and members of the community to get electric vehicles and overall just promote a more sustainable future. Ipswich is working towards becoming a net-zero carbon community in the future, and this is just a step in that direction. So electric vehicles have a lot of benefits. So there's no carbon emissions, no greenhouse gases, there's a lower fuel cost, and no lower maintenance. And we've been seeing a lot more people in the town and at the school get electric vehicles. For example, a teacher at the school in Slideman, she is thinking about getting one, but doesn't have anywhere to charge it. So this is a very accessible location that would encourage people to get electric vehicles.
So we have put lots of thought into the bus location for the electric vehicle. And after speaking with Mr. Race and Mr. Blair, we have, we have decided on the area on the side of the school behind the construction of the condos, and we will be putting in a transformer which will connect to the electricity pole, which will allow for future electric vehicle chargers to be put in. And it's a dual-port charging system, so it'll take up two spots, and we'll be able to charge two cars.
So on the ChargePoint app, customers are able to reserve a charging time and pay for it online. Also, the charging station comes with a system to pay in person by credit card or Apple. And also comes with a dashboard, and that allows us to analyze the charging data. And we can tell you about how long people are charging, how much revenue is coming in, and we can determine the pricing of the electric vehicle.
So for the pricing, so in total, it should be about $13,500. Now, that's including the insurance. We talked to Mr. Blair, and he thinks that we should not go through with getting the ChargePoint insurance that kind of comes with everything because the town has our own insurance for things like this, and they use it for the other electric vehicle charging stations that we have at our school, so our, our community. And then the, we also, our class is going to cover the five-year cloud network plan, which is kind of how all the dashboard features like work. And so we'll be covering that. And then if we order the station after January 20th, the price will go up 8%, and it will be about $14,500. And that's still including the insurance if we end up deciding to go along with that.
That includes the insurance to $14,500?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have discussed some options for how people will be charged for their electricity usage. One option would be free charging for staff and their students during school hours. And the community and public will not be able to use the charging station during those hours, and we will make that notable on the ChargePoint app. And we could also charge the normal town rate for electricity, so that would be the rate that, the same rate you would get if you charged your car at your house. We could also increase the charging fee to put towards the cloud network plan, which allows you to analyze the data and pay with a credit card. And this decision will be made off the data from the first five years. And Miss LaFrance's environmental classes and club will be analyzing this data, so we'll be able to make an educated decision on whether that plan should be renewed.
So we are still on the financing stage of our project. So so far, we.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes. So far, we wrote a grant to the Ipswich Education Foundation, and we also reached out to Moonland Bio Labs, Constitution for Savings, and Ebsco. And tonight, we just heard back from Ebsco that they're donating $1,000. And on top of that, we have over $6,000 in the Sustainable, Sustainability Class account.
Thank you so much for listening, and we hope that you can give us some support so we can move forth in our project. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much for a great presentation. We're very much for anything you can do for sustainability around schools. Also, owning electric cars is awesome, so you should definitely get one. The charging station seems expensive. I know that, for example, when I get an electric car, the town provides a charger for you. They give one to you for free. And it seems surprising that they're that much more than just a home charger. I can understand they have to be durable and so forth. It seems like a lot. Also, people who charge cars will find out very quickly that the rate of charge is really important. So there are certain transformers that are necessary to bring up faster rate of charging. And so the rate of charging is really, really important to anyone who has a car. If you only get four miles out of sitting there all day, you don't want to call it plug-ins, it's not working. But if you can get your, your car filled up with power, that would be great. It's just a matter of how fast and how much energy it can transfer quickly. So it's really important that we, you consider what rate of charging it will be, whether it's 40 or 4 kilowatts an hour. So that, that's really, really important, to pay close attention to it because it'll encourage use if it's a faster charger. That's why superchargers, the Tesla has, are so useful because they're really fast, means you can jump on. Obviously, someone sitting here all day, they can plug in, get quite a bit of juice, but, you know, it's not always going to be the case for a parent who wants to come watch game and power up their car while they're driving.
I, I think it's a no-brainer. You guys did a great job presenting it. You guys have probably already thought of this, but I think it would be a great idea to make sure that when we're building it, that the infrastructure is able to support expansion of this in the future. So rather than just supporting one, we want to make sure we have the ability to put multiple units in down the road, so.
Yeah, that's why we have a transformer put in, which will make it very easy in the future to add more on.
Perfect.
It seems like the town should support this. Have you reached out to the Ipswich utility?
Yeah, we've reached out to Mr. Blair and Mr. Race and all them, and they said that they would help with the installation and the electric departments would help hopefully, but they're not completely shared yet, but they should.
They should have funds for that. Go ahead.
So I've been involved in some of the conversations as well. So I did speak with, with John, and actually, I spoke with Chris Race yesterday. So if this project were to move forward, they're going to be dropping the power right from the line that's on the corner of that lock, putting a transformer and pad in, and they're going to run the conduit all the way down. They'll run the, they'll just dig one trench all the way down that side so that the pipes will be in the ground for future expansion. So that's, that is part of the plan already.
And I can tell you, from, you're planning to build a building over at the high school stadium here, which we never got to do, and I hope to do someday, that transformer costs about $50,000, or at least the one we still, we're going to put in for our building. So a bigger transformer costs real money.
Mm-hmm. All right. Do you know what kind of charger, are you going to have the fast charger there, the 40 or the 4-kilowatt one?
I think there's a still in like the process of deciding. We've always gotten the money. But we also spoke to Mr. Blair, and he said it was in his like 10-year plan to already do this at school and Mr. Race. So hopefully, like, we also will get support from them to do that.
I wonder if you could leverage the location, give them, them the revenue, and, and see if you can get more support from Electric Light to put it, put it in. Because you've got some, some great, great clients for them, electricity clients. Next question I have, what does the town do as far as charging for the power? Is it free with the town when you plug in with the town, or are those cars that plug in getting charged for electricity?
Yeah, you have to pay.
You have to pay?
There's like the credit card service is what allows it, and that's like, it's like $2,000 every five years for that cloud network plan. And after, we're paying for the first five years, and after that, we can decide whether or not we want to renew that plan. And that can be based off the data, like, if they analyze data off the dashboard.
Okay. I, I think it's a good opportunity for Electric Light to, you know.
Yeah, my only concern is it's expensive and nobody uses it because it costs money. I do, I would encourage it being free for students and faculty during the day, and just finding out how much electricity cost is. Otherwise, you can just run an extension cord out the window from someone's classroom and trickle in.
Yeah, that's free.
And that's, that's free. Got to the schools.
Free until you get enough for it.
The installation is $13,000.
Hope they'll amend the handbook for that one.
Is, do, do we need to support and vote on this tonight?
Well, we have it on the, oh.
No, we do.
No, we do. It's motion and action. So, so I think.
The source of the funds is the Sustainability Class, the class, Sustainability Classes funds, and then your fundraise.
Well, I'd certainly hope you hold on tight to the Sustainability Class funds until you get all your other avenues exhausted. And, and I really would encourage you to strongly, you're working on our behalf, so, so thank you. And, and I don't know, maybe, maybe we all talk about a master agreement with Electric Light to come on in here.
Our town is our utility. It's one of the great blessings of being at Ipswich, right, is we own our electricity. So, so we can, we can leverage that more than maybe you can leverage National Grid. And they should be more responsive to us as a town member. We certainly provide them with our wind turbine energy all the time. So we're doing something for them. We've done collaborations with them.
Exactly. And your administration can help you.
Dr. O'Flan, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, move to support. I mean, obviously.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, if this is on our long-term plan anyways, we're, you know, just sponsoring it up a bit in their timeline.
Move to support the Sustainability Classes goal for placing two charging stations in the parking lot.
Second.
Move by Hugh, second by. Move by Hugh, second by Pop. Is there any further discussion?
Two stations or one station, two cars?
It's one station, but it's dual cords, so it has two cars.
Right. Is that appropriate word in?
Guys are in the utility business, just excellent. Any other questions?
I just like the academic benefit of it too, that you'll get to analyze. Or maybe you won't, maybe you'll be on, but future classes will get to analyze the data, which is.
Yes, excellent, excellent. All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. What a great worthwhile project. It's great to see us step further into this century. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Great job.
Great job. All right. Next, Dr. Blake solicited a NASDAQ demographic study proposal that, that looked at, at many things, but, but one of the most important things that looked at is enrollment. And I sent it to you guys early December.
So if I could jump in here. So the, every year, we get the NASDAQ numbers, the enrollment projection. And they base that on, on birth rates and people currently living in the town. They look at the census data, et cetera. But it doesn't give us, I think, the level or depth of information that we're going to require in the next year or two. And so talking with, with Greg and Chubb, and then talking with folks that I know over at NASDAQ, I asked them to put together, you know, a scope of work and a proposal to give us more in-depth information than they would typically give on their cursory study. You know, this, so what you have before you this evening is that proposal. And you can see that it's much more in-depth because they, they talk with the town planners, et cetera. They, they'll be talking with, with some of us. Looking at the, at the enrollment data, current enrollments, future enrollments. They'll look at all the building projects around town that haven't really been taken into consideration in, in the annual study. Nor has the phenomena of the recent sale of homes in Ipswich in the, in this economy. We had a lot of people, a lot of home sales, from what I understand, where older families have sold in this high market and more or less cashed out. And we have younger families with, with children moving in. So I think that's part of the reason why we're seeing the enrollment bump. And so this, I, I asked for this study because I think moving forward, one of the main questions that's being asked now, in fact, I think it was the first question out of the gate, was, well, we're seeing our enrollment increase, is, is the school that we're looking to build going to be too small already? Well, I don't know. And so I think this, gathering this kind of information from an outside source will be beneficial to us in the long run. Trying to answer any questions that folks may have regarding that? If you have other ideas or?
So when we spoke of, of enrollment with, we fielded a lot, I'll back up. We fielded a lot of enrollment questions when we spoke about our elementary school building project recently. And that seemed to be a, a touchstone of, of concern. Dr. Blake sent, I don't know if, if everybody got it, but I've got from fifteen to twenty-one. Our enrollments actually have, in elementary school have actually gone down. And our low point was seven forty-three, including pre-K in two thousand nineteen. And it's gone up to, this year, was seven forty-eight in twenty-one. Back when we were looking at the elementary school project in fifteen and sixteen, it was eight twenty-one and seven eighty. So they actually are going down, but they look like they maybe have gone through a trough. But it would be great not to get that information from, I, we'll always have the real-time tracking information. It would be great to have a third party who's, who's done, who has also done enrollment studies that we've relied on for years, do one for us for the upcoming project.
So NASDAQ's always been reliable. Birth date has always been reasonably reliable for us too. We have, since I've been on the committee for whatever twenty years, had scares about any building project that occurs in the community. From the powder house project, everyone would say it would explode with children and they would be detrimental to the Winthrop School because so many low-income children move in there. To every other project that's ever been built in the community. So there's a lot of hysteria about it. And now it's forty R coming through and a thousand new homes going to be built, built within half a mile of the train station apparently are going to be available. I mean, there are lots of things that are still curveballs that could be, make this all unpredictable. I, I'm, I'm happy that you're trying to throw money at it and give an answer to people who are, you know, pushing it. But I think you'll always have people who say, but that's not valid because, but that's not valid because, but that's not valid because. And so you're going to have people questioning it regardless of what you do. It's nice that you're getting as good data as you can, that's fine. And I, I'm perfectly supportive of it, I just don't think it's worth that much effort. We're going to, we're going to be where NASDAQ says we're going to be, well.
On their cursory annual reports or with this report?
Our cursory annual report's been good.
Yeah, they are, they have.
But we have, I assume we've done these in-depth reports for like middle school, high school, for this building prior to that?
We've done in-depth reports, we've done NASDAQ, the population studies for us before. I think we did the other, the other one, two projects we did one. Pretty sure. And we did it when we did the YMCA project.
Thank you.
I mean, what I appreciate seeing here is kind of the on-the-ground knowledge of having interviews with, you know, people in the planning department, realtors, developers. I think that's useful. I understand you can look at birth rates and they probably are indicative of where we're headed. But I like the supplementation with the professional input as well.
I agree with you, Jeff. And I think, you know, the numbers are what they are, but I do think it shows the community that we're really putting in a strong effort to get accurate data to make these school decisions moving forward. So, you know, who knows? There are so many variables, you never know what things will ultimately end up looking like. But at least this is our sort of the best effort, I guess, we can put forward to try to get accurate data.
I agree. I support it. I just, I found it a little odd that there wasn't an itemized, you know, breakdown of the cost. It's just kind of a lump sum and we, I mean, I guess we're just taking for hours of labor. So I thought that a little odd, but I support getting the best data we can.
And they, their, their past data, as Hugh had said, and I want to stress it, has been very reliable. It's been on track. Pop.
It also caught my eye that there's a note or one of their points says that they have a proven record of success in effectively presenting and explaining school facilities planning issues in a variety of public forums. That might be something that we might want to take advantage of as we're presenting the findings to the public.
There's so many different things, like what if there's a building moratorium? How does that change it? What if we, you know, have forty R at the former Winthrop School site? And we build a thousand homes there? Wouldn't that be nice? You know, so there are all sorts of ways that this could all be way off.
Understood, understood. So are there any other questions on this report?
I'll move to support.
Second.
Okay, discussion, further discussion? How would you like to pay for it? That's, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, perfect.
That's, I, I would, I would, I would recommend that we take the money out of choice.
Seems an appropriate usage, yeah.
And frankly, our next subject, I'd recommend the same. That's where, we have a million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars as of December in choice now. So, and this is exactly what it's for. Okay. So was there a friendly amendment to pay for it from choice?
Move to support, pay for it from choice funds.
Second.
Okay. Well, any further discussion?
Just three months from, I look, we have two proposals tonight. Is this, is this three months? That's been it?
Three months of the signing of the.
Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Dr. Blake, your next report.
Yes, the next one is the school facilities committee has, has met. And we had a workshop here with Bill Loeb of the Loeb Group. And, you know, in, in, in an effort to continue the conversation, and as we said we would do, continue the conversation with the public around the notion of, of new school facilities. Couch it like that at this point. We, we had a home conversation with Bill Loeb. And Bill put together this proposal for us regarding listening sessions and, you know, engaging the public around the notion of a new school facility project. So in the proposal, there's a number of tasks that he outlined and some, some timeframes that would bring us through the spring. And then he outlined a fee schedule for the different tasks that he's outlined. And so, you know, he's, he's looking to run, just, just for the, for the public that's listening, watching. Task one would be to plan the phase one listening sessions. That would be late January, early February. We meet with the school building, school, school committee, myself, the facilities subcommittee, and develop the anticipated questions and things like that. Task two would be to facilitate all of those listening sessions and the survey that, that he would do. And then it would be a plan, a phase two with additional listening sessions and reviewing the survey for us. And then producing the draft and the summary of the, of all the information that he's already gathered. And again, you have that in your packet, I think that was probably last, last week or last month.
Yeah, I guess so. No, it was last year too. The, you know, I just highlighted facilitation projects are just designed to integrate decision-making of government agencies with input from members of the public. I really like the, I really like the manner in which Bill, Bill speaks. And our interactions with him have been very positive. I know other communities have had positive experiences with his facilitation groups. One of the other things that when there is, when they, when they hold these, and I think you saw one there for, for about planned for sixty people. They, he brings, it's not just Bill. It's Bill and his partner, as well as other facilitators that they bring in. So there's a facilitator at every, when they're in breakout sessions, at every breakout session, moving, moving, moving the conversation forward and making sure the right, the right themes and questions are answered, come out and are answered. So, so it's not just Bill Loeb here. It's Bill with, with plenty of staff and his partner. I have, go ahead, Pop.
I was going to say, I think this looks great. I would like, I mean, I appreciate that he, he considers backup plan for Zoom sessions. But I feel really strongly that what Jeff had said about previously, which is that Zoom be an option even in the in-person sessions for those who can't physically attend. I really want to make sure we go forward with that as well.
Okay, I understand. I think, I, I'm glad you're mentioning that right now. I think, I don't think it's productive. I, we wanted to start in mid-January with these. But with the current COVID spike, I'd frankly like to push it off. I think, I've, I go to the, at the tri-board meeting, I'll use that as an example. There was a Zoom, there was a Zoom wall and there was a live, and there was a live discussion. There was plenty of discussion live. There was very little discussion on Zoom. And when it did come through, a lot of it was choppy, couldn't be heard. And, and it, it wasn't useful to the participant. Well, I know we should offer it, but we should very much encourage live participation.
But I think in many cases, you know, you'll get people that won't come to an in-person session like that, that would be certainly willing to listen in on Zoom and maybe not interact, but.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Absorb the information and help them kind of get to a decision.
Absolutely. My, my point was is, you know, we, we thought about starting it right away. I think we should delay it much.
No, I agree with you.
So just because, we should encourage, we talked about the lower CAF area to be, perhaps be a first, first facilitation session. Invite all of our elementary communities to the lower CAF. Big room. But big rooms don't even work today to get, to get people in.
Does he know, does Bill know our timeline of potential SOI submission? Because it's not April twenty-two.
We talked about the potential for next, for a year from.
April twenty-three.
Right. I, I know that, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, he knows, he does.
So there's some different options, right? For one, one session day or two session days, different costs? Am I reading that right?
No, they're different phases, I believe.
Different phases?
I think there are two options in each phase.
Yeah.
He likes to do the two listening sessions per day. It's, it's pretty efficient. And he can hit up, let's say he hit up that, that we did one, he did one down in the cafeteria, then you go maybe to the town hall and get a different, a different group.
Get the families, one, one session, and then the teachers, a different session, something like that. You get multiple sessions in a day.
We, if we decide to go forward, we'll have him, we'll invite him in via Zoom probably to, to discuss how we should all move forward. Because I think this should be a joint effort of this entire committee.
I do recall in Amherst, they also had an option for community members to fill out a survey or submit their.
That's in there.
Socks, it is, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Sorry. So I don't think we can just move to support, well, again, we have the question of how are we going to, what are we, from what funds are we going to pay for it? But it seems to me like there's two different numbers at the bottom that we could support, a grand total one or grand total two.
What, what I might suggest is that we do perhaps a, a not to exceed number so that we don't lock ourselves in tonight.
Right.
You know, with, with COVID, you know, it may change some of the sessions and, and timing of things. So if we do a not to exceed twenty-three.
Two, six, five, fifty?
Twenty-three? Right, twenty-three, fifty?
It says twenty-two, six, fifty.
The Zoom sessions are optional, so we'd have to include that in the additional Zoom sessions. Times four. Times four.
And so the, the first phase of listening sessions would be more general, community values kind of priorities and phase two would be more detailed.
I think if you're looking for a not to exceed number, that the two days of listening session per phase, you know, adding in an additional Zoom session at each phase, which could be available to have people who are unavailable to do in person, that number would be at twenty-five thousand four fifty.
Thank you, sir. Did I hear a motion?
Funding source? Choice.
I thought Jeff made it.
No.
Move to support Bill Loeb facilitation proposal with a number not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Four fifty?
Four hundred and fifty dollars with funding from Choice.
Second.
Moved by Kate, second by Greg. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Thank you very much. Well, Dr. Blake will get to Bill shortly. I don't know, perhaps we have a brief call maybe at our next meeting with him to talk about the proposal?
Email in tomorrow when you let Loeb.
Yep, yep. Okay. What's next on our, what's next?
School choice.
School choice, okay, here we go.
So every year, the school committee has to make a decision about whether or not, this is basically thumbs up or thumbs down for the state, whether or not we're gonna participate in the school choice program for the following year. Typically, we do it late and there's been some issues and questions, concerns around, around the, the application process and the students who end up coming here, et cetera. And so what I'd like to do is do this in two phases. One, have a discussion about whether or not the school committee wants the Ipswich Public Schools to continue to participate in the school choice program. And then if so, over the next two weeks, I'll work with the administrators, looking at our class sizes and come back to you with potential seats at different grade levels. Because at some grade levels, we may be maxed out and can't take any Choice students, whereas we'll have room in others. So I'd like to do that in, in two phases. One, tonight's discussion and vote is just whether or not to participate. And then the next meeting, we'll bring in numbers, you know, for each grade level and we can, we can talk about that.
So, right now, we have, we have forty-five students in our choice program. Looking at it from a dollar incentive point of view, they bring in two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue at five thousand dollars a student. A few years ago, I looked back, less than five years ago, we were above three-hundred thousand a year. So our, our choice, our choice desire of to choice in is going down.
We had more than eight-hundred thousand dollars a year for enough of them. We had a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy Choice kids.
After the new high schools.
Right, right. I, I just went back five years and we were at three twenty-five. So it's a great source of revenue for us. Right now, I just said we had a million, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars and change. Am I right, Cheryl?
Right.
As, as of December this year. Choice funding has provided, well, tonight's a good example. It gives us an opportunity to enhance our, 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 our knowledge with programs, with, with this money. We also used it, used Choice in a big way in the school feasibility study when we needed additional money to, to study, for, study the going side, I believe. And we didn't go back to the town, we took the money out of Choice.
Do Choice funds for new students still go to the school that has them? Is that how it's working or are Choice funds shared with the existing principals?
A portion per the policy, yes. It's twenty-five percent.
We had it half for a while.
So it's also a good fund. It's our biggest balance fund that we have.
Finization.
Outside of our, well, excuse me, I always think of that as our budget. But it, it's our second largest.
Money's funded.
Thank you. It's our second largest, thank you. Perhaps why I'm not on this budget subcommittee. The, it's a good backstop for if we don't get an override some year and, and we need, we, we need to fund some programs. But I guess more importantly, like programs, like we have educations, the educations program that brings in foreign students to our, to our, to our school system. I know I've listened to your, the benefits of Choice from, that you extolled from years and years about, you know, how these Choice kids actually enhance the experience of our Ipswich students in our classrooms. I certainly remember we had a robotics class that developed something called the snot bot. It's way, it's, I just always stuck with me and this was, this was a NOAA project.
Video was terrific too.
Oceanographic and Atmospheric Association. These kids developed, the NOAA scientists couldn't get the, the blowhole, the, the, shoot, I don't know, the snot out of a, out of a whale. So these Ipswich kids designed a drone that would fly above the whale and when, when he blew, when he came up for air, it, the whale blows out first and would, you know, it would blow all over the, over the drone and they'd collect samples.
The snot bot.
That was, but, but, one of the big players in that, in that project was a Gloucester kid who had choiced into the Ipswich schools. And actually, that Gloucester kid was, was incremental in getting that connection to, to NOAA. So, you know, that's just a great example of Choice there.
So historically, Choice brought in a huge number of talented musicians from surrounding communities who were coming here for our outstanding music program. Our highest performing athletic teams brought in a number of kids who wanted to play on high performing athletic teams and brought us to state championships, including this year. Our volleyball team wouldn't have won the championship without our number one player who led us to a state championship, who was a Choice kid, who came in because she loved the kids she knows through club from Ipswich. And similarly, we've had success with basketball and soccer teams where kids have come choice to Ipswich and have been part of that community who wanted to use some of our great extracurriculars and some of our academic skills. Remember, the large majority of the kids who came in a big flow of Choice ten years ago, fifteen years ago, were trike kids who were disaffected by the lack of quality in their elementary schools and middle school. And we brought in, I don't know, seventy or eighty kids from several, some of those classes and, or from that school district. And we had, you know, a great diversity of kids come to the schools, including my daughter's future husband. So, so I, I find Choice adds to the wealth and into the success of our community as educatious and foreign students add to diverse experience and success of our kids. It's nice to have Ipswich schools for Ipswich kids, but it adds a little bit to have kids from other towns showing us what it's like and showing us people who want to be here. Now they want, they, they choose to be here, every Choice kid chooses to be here.
We see that with the education program as well, with the foreign kids, that's, that's phenomenal as well.
So what stands out to me is, so thirty-three of the forty Choice kids last year were at the high school. Is that typical for, or do we tend to get the most, or is it kind of hit or miss?
So I think over the last couple of years, you know, to Hugh's point, a lot of the, a lot of those kids have been in our system all, all along.
No, actually, for the last few years, we weren't, won't allow anyone in the elementaries because we were trying to shrink our elementaries intentionally, I think. And our middle school, we always had a middle school program that required a hundred and sixty kids to run. But when we reformulated our middle school program, we stopped trying to fill the middle school to the, to the brim. And so that meant really the most logical place is high school where most kids move. Most kids wanna, for one reason or another, want to change high school somewhere in the middle. It's the easiest time to change, but the beginning of high school is generally easiest to buy. That's when you see the most mobility is high school. But we used to get most of our kids in middle school.
Also, I want to point out, and, and Dr. Blake did, we usually do this in May. It's too damn late in May. People are making, we just heard the parent that came in during citizens comments, he'd like to make his choice decision in March. And that's when, when families would.
Well, private schools are offering admission. So that's also a choice, people are making, St. John's Prep and other schools have a, have a middle and a high school that are pulling kids in and they're, they're accepting kids now. Kids who have a choice, they want to come here.
Yep.
Can I support Choice program for all the reasons everybody's already said? I just, I want to be a little, and I know we're not deciding this tonight, but I want to just be a little conscious of numbers because given we've had a really challenging couple of years and, and I want to just be cognizant and, you know, listen to the administrators and make sure we're not overloading classrooms. And I know we don't add Choice kids, it, it doesn't add money and cost, but it adds bodies.
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to make sure we are cognizant of the numbers that we finalize on in a couple of weeks.
And that's why we, that's why it's split, we, we will. Have you, you've been through a Choice phase before, haven't you?
This is my one-year anniversary, I think. I started at this meeting last year, so.
Oh, really? Happy anniversary, Kate. So the administrators come to us with their recommendations and, and that's what I would assume we'd get very shortly.
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
Yeah, we vote to whether we want to participate at all. Then they go back in their corner and decide how many kids they can take per grade. They come to us with their proposal and we say yes or no, basically, for each grade.
Yep, we vote on each grade.
Yeah, I know, I just want to play it for simple.
Yep, got it.
And remember, last year, we didn't want to take any elementary kids or Choice kids particularly because of the concerns about COVID learning and recovery from not going to classrooms too much.
So move to support. Second.
Moved by Greg, second by Hugh. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Choice for next year? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, Pop, you snuck a policy in on me, I'm sorry. I've become, I'm unprepared for that, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So, I mean, there, there aren't any real huge changes anyway and, and I can kind of go through policy by policy if you want me to tell you what changed, but they're, most of them quite small. So if you look at the first one, GBEA, we made no changes and invited to accept it as it was. GBEB, we removed in regard to students from the end of the second bullet point. Removed of the committee at the end of the first sentence of the sixth paragraph and changed teacher to educator in every instance. That was it, so no big changes there. In the next one, GEBC, we changed teacher to educator. GEC is the one about drug screening, I believe. Drug-free workplace and we just did a little change there, which actually you can see because it's highlighted and it showed, we added unprescribed and/or before unlawful manufacture in the first sentence and then use of a controlled substance and we have including marijuana. So those were the only changes in that one. No changes to the next two, to GBGF, we just added as amended to the end of the first sentence. And then no changes to GBIJ or K. GCA, which is professional staff positions, we just added newly created before professional staff in the first sentence. So new positions. We've tabled a few. In GCBB, we replaced principals with administrators throughout the policy and just did some wordsmithing of the last paragraph. The content is the same, it was just a little editing. GCBC, we've replaced Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day, but we've also tabled it for now, we're gonna look at that again. No changes to GCCGDC. A couple of them, GCEGCF, we've deferred to the DEI Working Group for review. GCG, which is substitute professional staff employment. We just moved to the extent possible to the beginning of the first sentence, so a lot of it's just wordsmithing. Kind of making, cleaning up the language. Yeah, and then no changes to GCJ and we've tabled GCIA for now. So, I mean, not any really significant changes.
Thank you for all the work.
If you have any questions, then happy to answer.
Move to support policies. Do you have a question?
No, I said second.
Policies in section G as amended.
Moved by Kate, second by Hugh. Thank you for all this work. I know, and it's, I remember doing it, it's tough.
Isn't this what you do all day at work anyways?
Yeah, I like editing.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. The superintendent's administration, administrative report, please, sir.
Yes, so December 2nd, 2021, our last meeting, seems like an eternity ago. Not gonna run down every meeting that I've had over the past month, I'll just give some highlights. There've been numerous subcommittee meetings that have been part of, you'll be hearing about them tonight, we just covered the policy meetings. I continue to meet with the principals on a regular basis, in particular the two new principals, to, you know, make sure that they're adequately supported in addition to their official mentoring. I recently completed a course on supporting culturally proficient classrooms and schools running conjunction with the Mass Association of School Specialists and the initiatives for developing equity and achievement for students with ideas. Prior to break, we were fortunate enough to be able to hold all of our concerts in person, in fact. Large audiences as well as having them all streamed to the YouTube channel. So it was great to have everybody together for that short period of time. I was elected to the Executive Board of MASSS as a delegate to the National Association. I attended my first meeting in Franklin, Mass prior to the holiday break. I continue to meet with the elementary principals to monitor kindergarten enrollment concerns, the numbers and projections there. I anticipate that we're gonna need some additional teaching positions next year. We're working on that in the budget process. Work continues on the ELL program, unpacking our standards, reviewing our curriculum and organizing service delivery for the new students. The DEI group met, this is the internal group. They met and discussed what the group would look like at the end of the year, you know, having had some successes. And we talked about what they want to work on between now and then, now that they have a vision statement. Some ideas that they identified included reaching out to other districts to collaborate, see how they're working through some of these issues in their districts, conducting book talks with students and teachers, ensuring that we identify all marginalized groups in Ipswich and providing a safe way for people to report DEI-related incidents. Budget discussions and preparation have started for the FY23 budget. Budget discussions and preparation have started with the FY23 budget. Prior to break, the budget subcommittee met with the administrators to discuss the current state of their budgets and where they thought things needed to head in the coming year. Initial budgets were submitted at the end of December, Cheryl and I are meeting with the administrators this week to review their initial submissions. We are seeing a significant increase in the budget that we'll be working to pare down in the next couple of weeks before I submit it to the school committee for discussion. COVID continues to occupy a great deal of time, especially this week and over the vacation week, and certainly, as I mentioned before, I have a new appreciation for the nurses and all they do. Parents and staff were notifying me over break of any positive cases, and I was trying to keep tabs on them and pass along the information to the town, which turned out to be a mundane task. And I already talked about Monday and canceling school in order to get the testing kits out and the mavs. You know, it's been a difficult week for everybody, I think, you know, as Caroline indicated, you know, kids are anxious, staff is anxious, the nurses are hanging by a thread this week, and hopefully that, you know, the snow day tomorrow will help, and, you know, next week we'll start to see a clearing out and a decrease and back to some sense of normalcy, so, at least that's my hope.
Any update on that ELL position?
Yep, so, we have a person hired, we are stealing them from a different, another district, they're currently working, so, they had to give notice, and we had to do some negotiating around when they could leave, but they are coming up.
When is it, when do they...
This month, January.
Beautiful.
And that's full-time position?
Yep. That took some doing, we had some people in the pipeline, we had offered it to several people that decided to stay where they were.
I know.
This person is signed, sealed, and...
Not in the door yet.
Not in the door yet, but has committed, and we've worked with their district.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Blake? Okay, thank you, Dr. Blake. Subcommittee working groups and liaison reports, I thought since we had Christmas, maybe there wasn't a lot of activity, but did athletics meet? Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you, Caroline.
Great to have you here.
Thank you.
We did meet, when did we meet?
Enjoy tomorrow.
Thank you.
Athletics Subcommittee did meet right before break, didn't it?
It was like months ago, yeah. I'm trying to remember what.
You were at that meeting, right?
We talked about just the fall sports and results, winter sports enrollment, which seemed to be pretty much on track with previous years. I'm trying to think, what else, Hugh, was on our topic list for that athletics Subcommittee? Nothing really stands out.
Yeah.
Obviously, our next meeting will bring up the topic of waivers and, you know, try to get a sense of how the winter numbers look and, you know, and, or I should say, the spring registration numbers look, and kind of go from there.
Thank you. Budget, you're up.
Yeah, budget, we met prior to the holidays, as Brian said, we had the administrators come in and just kind of give us an initial overview of some of the things that they're hoping to add or that we'll expect to see in their budgets, and as Brian also mentioned, there was quite a bit of discussion around increased staffing, you know, a lot of concern still about the social and emotional needs of the kids, and how do we work through that? So, I think, you know, it'll be an interesting discussion when we actually see the budgets, which will happen on January 20th, they'll present to the budget Subcommittee, and make a first run of that before it comes in front of the whole group, but, yeah, I mean, it's definitely a challenging year, and I think that will be reflected in the budget numbers as we, you know, as we roll this out for next year, so, there'll be a lot to talk about, and I think a lot, they'll certainly need the administration to really defend all of the increased costs to the extent that they're in the budget, and we need to be able to present a, you know, a good concise pitch and a compelling argument to the finance committee and obviously to the town as a whole, that these increased expenses are needed in light of our override request coming up next year, so, I'm looking forward to seeing what the numbers look like.
Thank you. Communications?
We meet next week.
Great.
Tuesday.
Thank you.
Are we on a newsletter cycle this next one, or no?
I think it's January.
Yes, yeah, you do, January.
We're on that new format that Laura and I need to...
Yeah, we need to work out that.
Oh, it's going to look different?
What?
So, we need to work out that newsletter format.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, I think, I don't know what date we agreed on, 20th of January?
I can check my note, I should have looked on my own.
Great. Mutual concerns, I think we didn't meet, we talked about that last school committee meeting, I think, we met right before the last one. Negotiations has been meeting regularly, we're almost there. I look forward to an executive session shortly.
Talking along.
No, I look forward to an executive session shortly to talk to everyone about this. Had some productive calls today. Operations, we need to meet to talk about a mid-year review, the mid-year?
Is this a report, just a report out for me?
Okay. All right, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you about that, yeah, no, okay. Policy, we've just discussed. Race inequity, have you guys met, Paul?
We met last week.
We've met twice, since the last meeting.
A couple of us, Jeff, do you want to go for it?
What did we, we updated two policies, and I think they both are referred to the policy committee?
We haven't finished wordsmithing the DEI policy, we finished IB, which is academic freedom, big change is coming, very exciting, but the, our policy committee is going to review that in our next meeting. And the other one, we still have to rewrite the first paragraph.
Okay, thank you. And, any other working groups meet? I don't think so. Did IEF meet?
No, we meet at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you, sir.
31st.
Okay. All right.
STEAM team met, and we are, we were just breaking up into three groups, logistics, communications, and the hub, and getting ready for the showcase, which will hopefully be in person in April.
Super. That's great. That's such a great event. You know what else was a good event, was the FEFFIs event when that was done years ago. We should think about that someday, when we get, when we break out of this, that was phenomenal. All right, anything else on subcommittees and working groups and liaisons?
Back to communications, I will find my notes about the next newsletter and email you with what you're being asked to write.
Good.
I took notes, I just can't find them.
No, that's fine, that actually, actually, that kind of segues nicely into new business. Anything else on committees? And new business? We have a, next meeting, we have a roles and responsibility presentation, I'm looking directly at you, because it's, will take an hour before the next school committee meeting, which is 6:00 PM on the 20th.
Oh, is this the one with the attorney?
Yes, Liz Valerio's coming in.
We just, we have a budget.
We have a budget Subcommittee meeting.
The administrator.
At what time?
At 6:00 PM.
We're going to have to move that, because we're already scheduled for this.
Budget's important, too.
Yeah, with all the administrators.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get...
I'm perfectly happy to skip out on Liz Valerio.
I know you are, but we're not going to let you, because your institutional knowledge is important.
Not really, it's, we hire and power the superintendent, we control the budget.
Yeah, and we're not operations.
And we're not operations.
We're policies, that's all I... Okay, the, I'm going to talk to Liz Valerio, all right, maybe we'll...
Well, do we want to see if the administrators can do another night?
You want to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll coordinate that, sorry about that. Any other new business?
Did we move the kids out to the 20th because of COVID, or was that just for the...
Because of the COVID, that was because of COVID, because of this spike, yes, didn't make sense. I didn't think a lot of parents would be enthusiastic about coming and watching their children get their, watching their students get their certificates. So, next meeting, I'm going to be stepping down his chair. I will open, the plan was to open the meeting and go to a, I will open the meeting, we will go to an exec session, we will have our roles and responsibilities forum, then I will come back to public meeting and turn the gavel over to our senior presiding member, which is you, Hugh, and we will, and then we will elect a new chair. I hope that you all join me in nominating and voting, this is my, my hope, not the committee's hope, but my hope, nominating and voting Greg Stevens as chair. His skill sets make him the perfect fit for what the committee has before it, budget review and approval, and the override request.
Don't oversell, Chubb.
Stop. Okay, I'm done.
So, Chubb, why are you sketching out on us?
Well, I'll get there, I'll get there, I'll get there. I'm hopeful that you may consider and vote on Greg's nomination for vice chair at that meeting. And I tell you, I have, if there's one thing that I have, I was vice chair for a couple of cycles, and it was a lonely place to be, frankly. I think...
You might have been the first vice chair, were you the first vice chair?
I don't know.
That's not vice chair.
It was pretty lonely.
We had no vice chair until...
Okay, okay.
Five, six years.
Well, it was pretty lonely. Basically, it was inquiry...
A reflection on your superintendent.
Inquiring about the health, about the health of my chairs that I served, so, when I came as chair, I wanted to make sure that it became a collaborative effort between vice chair and chair to run the district, it wasn't just two people making all the decisions. I think that's carried on with Greg, and I really, it was great with Carl, and I think that's carried on with Greg, and I really hope that this becomes a tradition of this committee, that the vice chair is an integral and an important part of the committee. I've got a lot of professional and personal commitments that I can't devote as much time to. In the next couple of months, I am getting off in May, I, the May, the May term for me as being vice chair always was awkward for end-of-year events, we had two chairs step down in May, and it was, it was pretty awkward for continuity's sake, I think this is a good time for continuity, but the main reason is, is I have some professional and personal commitments that I have to attend, that I can't devote as much time to it, to it. So, I've been honored to be your chair, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Chubb, great job.
Thank you. Okay. Vouchers and bills?
Oh, I tried.
I know, I hate that.
It kind of pops up, and it's always, it always pops up, but it's signed by the time I actually look at it.
Yeah.
What? We all see it.
We all see it, we all see it.
I actually sent an email to the poor lady, and I'm like, I'm not sure you're supposed to be sending me this, I don't sign them anymore, she's very patiently like, we send it to everyone. I'm like, sorry.
Well, we're stage bringing all that paper here, so, it's all electronic now, and everybody has, you know, an opportunity to see it.
Okay, consent agenda, move the Ipswich School Committee to accept the following: The school committee, open session meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2021, a check from Geek, I never know how to pronounce this. Geskis, I always say Geekis. Studios in the amount of $940 to be deposited into the Doian Student Activities account, a check from Geskis Studios in the amount of $1,040 to be deposited into the middle school student activities account, the purchase of 19 jackets, oh, look at this, for the high school girls volleyball team players and coaches by the Institute for Sabins, equal to the amount of $721.05 plus shipping and handling.
That is all the Institute for Sabins paper, that's nice.
That's really nice, all those...
I just had a question on the Geskis ones.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a big one.
There's a $30 difference in between the check that's provided here and the amount on the consent agenda, I think it was $1,070, and I don't think that we have copies of the Doian check.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, $1,070.
Good eyes.
Okay, so, I'm going to amend that to $1,070.
And then, I'm just curious, I assume this has something to do with class pictures and other corresponding to payments that come from the high school and to the Winthrop school also that just haven't been received?
Say again?
Are there payments to the high school and to the Winthrop school that just haven't been processed or received yet?
They haven't come forward yet, but they will.
Cool.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, cool, it's unanimous. Motion, Jared?
Second.
Thank you very much, thank you, Ipswich, have a nice night, look at that break before nine o'clock. Beat that day.
Eight forty-six.
No, no, I heard that loud and clear last time.
Looking at the latest weather, we're not going to get any snow, no kidding.
That's Ipswich school time.
Starting in this area, somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00 AM, I hope it comes down.